Thank you for coming tonight. I'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Like I always say, I love to see this room packed, but other nights it's more packed than others. So, welcome and sit back and relax and enjoy the meeting. First, I'd like to start off with a moment of silence and then from there we'll go with the pledge. Thank you, staff, for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please call roll.
Kariso.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Dryden.
Here.
Hartsfield.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Mayberry. Nodder.
Here.
Rochelle.
Here.
Weathers.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. We have a core. Tonight on first recognition is student recognition for Lawrence County High School. Mr. Joyner.
Thank you. Jasmine, would you come up, please? Stand with me. Thank y'all for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's my pleasure to recognize one of our most outstanding students at Lawrence County High School, Ms. Jasmine Cash. Jasmine is an outstanding young lady. She's a very hard worker, both at home and at school. She would tell you that her cosmetology class has been the highlight of her high school career and she's represented our school well in competitions and she will continue to do that. She actually has cut my hair a couple of times, which will show you that she knows how to work with limited resources as well. So, but she's done a great job. One of our teachers commented about how Jasmine always takes time with the students who come to our cosmetology classes from our UDL class. And this was her quote. She said, "They love getting special treatment from her and truly miss her when she happens to be out." Jasmine has a heart for students with special needs and she truly does. She just lights up a room. Another teacher commented that Jasmine is always positive and always a positive spot in her classroom. She puts other needs before her own and isn't scared of a challenge and always the first to volunteer and jump in and help. She works after school at Dairy Queen. She enjoys serving at her church as well. But one of the most impressive things about Jasmine to me is a statement that she made to me. She said, "My absolute favorite pastime is to hang out with my little sister Charlie," and Charlie's here tonight, "and she does a great job looking after her little sister each day after school." And Jasmine truly is an exceptional young lady. She really does represent the fact that leadership is best exemplified through service. So, again, it gives me great pleasure to recognize one of our outstanding students, Ms. Jasmine Cash.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. On our next, on the agenda tonight is public comments. About two, three, six months ago, the legislature of Tennessee passed a bill stating that each member or any member of the community is welcome to have comments on school board that's on the agenda. So, at this time, I don't believe we have any public comments, so I'll move on. On the first, first tonight is consent items. We have A through E. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries consent items. Going forward, on number two, we have report items. On first, report items, we have school reports. It's Lawrence County High School. Mr. Joyner.
Thank you. I want to thank you again for the opportunity to share with you tonight some of the wonderful things that are happening every day at Lawrence County High School. I know I shared a doc with you all that I will refer to and I won't read through the whole thing, but just wanted to make sure that I've updated a few things and we'll add a few comments tonight to some of those. But in what I shared, just wanted to highlight some of our opportunities and offerings at Lawrence County High School. Our early post-secondary opportunities, we offer statewide dual credit and you see those classes listed there. We offer local dual credit through Columbia State and through the University of North Alabama. We offer to our students the opportunity for advanced placement classes. Some of those are in-house and some of those are through AP Access For All through the Nisswonger Foundation. So, we are glad to be able to offer those. We offer dual enrollment through our CTE classes as well and there's a listing of those for you there. I did want to highlight a few of those. Cosmetology has been added, as well as digital design, to those dual enrollment opportunities. We are always looking to add opportunities there for our students. We're currently exploring an option for a possible IT class with TCAT this fall and so we're hopeful that that will work out for us. Listed the industrial certifications that we offer through our CTE classes. We did add a new one there this year as well, a very last one there, the Serve Safe certification, which a lot of our students use right now. A lot of them are involved in the fast food industry and so that has been beneficial to them, but also if they plan a career there, that would be beneficial for them as well. Wanted to highlight a few of the academic successes that we've seen at our school this year. This past school year, Lawrence County High School achieved a level five on our school-wide composite score. Also a level five on our school-wide numeracy and a level one on our school-wide literacy. All those were based on growth, on student growth and based off of our EOC exams. Our teachers did a great job working diligently to achieve these level-five scores. They spent a lot of time researching, sharing best practices with each other, but also researching practices as well and I just want to thank them for the extra time and effort that they put in to achieve those. We've already began to address our level-one score and of course we want to see that improve and get better as we go forward. We've increased our coaching of our teachers to help them to be able to better break down data and student records to help us identify students that are most in need of targeted instruction. And I want to thank Ms. Ridgeway. I know she's here tonight, but I want to thank her for her assistance in sharing that information with our admin team and also with our teachers and just helping us to break that down. Our English department has specifically benefited from collaborating with our teachers system-wide and that has been helpful to them and they've shared that with us as well. Also want to note that we received a B on our state report card. We're proud of that accomplishment and the hard work that went in to achieve that score, but we were very close to an A and so that's what we want to strive to do is to work toward addressing those deficiencies just to be more diligent in ensuring that we have accurate reporting on some of that data and also that our teachers are committed to continue to push our students to do their best. The next table there shows our post-secondary going rate and this past year was 68 percent. I know Ayers Foundation has mentioned there. I just want to say again just how thankful I am for the Ayers Foundation and for the job that they do inside our school. They help our students tremendously. Our Ayers counselors were recognized as a FAFSA champion by the Higher Ed Commission this past year and that signifies that they got 90 percent of our Tennessee Promise Eligible Students to complete the FAFSA. And that was a lot of persistence on parents and on the students that our Ayers counselors did. They just did a great job there and of course that ultimately benefits the students in financial aid and opportunities. Our advanced placement exams just showed our percentage, our passage rate there on our AP offerings there at Lawrence County High School. Those are listed there. The ACT, of course, our students take that, our juniors and seniors take that and currently Lawrence County High School sits with an overall ACT composite of 18. The statewide ACT composite for last year's graduating cohort was 19, so we want to continue to work there. I listed some of the things that we do and offer as incentives for students to retake the ACT to hopefully improve their scores. We also, our teachers are working constantly to try to improve those scores. As we observe classes, we hear them actually saying, you know, "Watch for this on the ACT," or this type question. They try to incorporate that into their questioning as well to reinforce that. The next section there lists our career and technical education focus areas that we offer and some of the Skills USA and skills organizations that are available to our students. Also moving down there to student involvement, we have various clubs and organizations at Lawrence County High School that our students can take part in, extracurricular activities. And one that I want to highlight is our Student Governor's Association. Mr. Mandelann does a great job leading that group. They provide a lot of fun activities for our students, but also a lot of worthwhile activities. The Beach Week and the Big Kahuna Competition that we have every January. This past year, they worked and raised $27,000 to assist our students with post-secondary scholarships and the Mickey Dunn Scholarship, so we were just thrilled with that. But also to the community as well for supporting that endeavor and for all, and we had, that was on the snow week. If you remember, we only had a couple of days that week and so I was just really impressed with what they were able to do there. Just want to mention a few things about our athletic teams. We offer several athletic offerings at Lawrence County High School. Our bowling teams continued to have success, both our boys and girls. Our boys were district and region champs and advanced to the state. Our girls finished runner-up. Our teams also, we co-op with Loretta High School, so I know they had some students that competed on our team, so we were glad to be able to work with them on that. Addie Moore competed in the state cross-country as an individual and she also has signed a scholarship to continue her pursuits there and her education at UT Southern. Our golf team finished first in the district and region and also competed at the state. Our basketball teams are involved in the district tournament right now. Both have already qualified for the region next week, so we wish them well. And I know our cheerleaders, you probably are aware, they went to national competition this past week and just returned, represented us well there. Spring sports are getting kicked off and a lot of activity there. Lawrence County High School would like to thank the board and Mr. Atkins for all that you do for us on a daily basis, but specifically just want to thank you for the installation of our bleachers and lift and the gymnasium. That's been a tremendous improvement and the anticipated completion of that project. I know there's some things already underway for that for next year. We're also appreciative of additional staff. The addition of an SRO and a school nurse has just enabled us to protect and serve our students much better. We're thankful for the resources that have been made available for us to be able to tutor our students. We do that a couple of days a week and we're hopeful that those funds will continue to be available to offer our students that service. Wanted to mention a couple of things, just as long, current and long-range capital needs that as we look to the future, if you're familiar with our school, we have some classrooms that have some temporary portable partitions that can be moved to expand the areas of those classrooms. We would like to see, from a safety and academic standpoint, the possibility of replacing those with permanent walls in the future. They're very thin. There's noise considerations from class to class, but also, as I mentioned, safety concerns. Onings that could be used to protect our students from inclement weather as they travel between buildings. Consideration of an auxiliary gym and the paving of our parking lots that are getting in a state of disrepair. And again, I know you have a lot of things to consider there, but I just wanted to kind of mention a few things that we see as needs moving forward. In closing, I would like to recognize and congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Tabitha Stedman. She's a biology teacher, science teacher in our schools, but she was also recognized as a District Teacher of the Year, so I want to congratulate her. I am grateful to work alongside her and the other 119 faculty and staff members at Lawrence County High School every day and we're proud to serve the 1,064 students that we have there. And I am proud to be their principal. I'm honored to be their principal and again to work alongside them and know that they are going to work hard to meet the challenges that we see every day. And we appreciate your support, again, on a daily basis and thank you again for the opportunity to share with you all tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Joyner? I guess this is going on your third year, second year?
I mean, my third year.
Third year.
Third year, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Last year, I welcomed you home and this year I will welcome you home again.
I appreciate that.
I hope you're going to stay for a while.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Next school report is Pioneer Virtual Academy. Ms. Johnson.
I always follow someone who's really tall, so being really short. Thank you. My name is Marsha Johnson and I took over as the PVA Coordinator in July of this school year. I just want to kind of bring to you kind of like a snapshot of what PVA is right now. Currently, we have 141 students. Of those, 15 are our high school students. We have 32 sixth through eighth grade students and we have 94 K through five students. We have students in Shelby County, all the way up to Sullivan and Carter County, so we have Tennessee, the spread of Tennessee. You may be aware that Harmony is our educational partner. Harmony provides our students with our educational curriculum and our educational supports. We've met in person twice this year. They've been very welcoming. They've been very accommodating. They've really walked me through what our process is with PVA and Harmony. We communicate daily and they're great to work with. We've had many firsts this year. We've actually had two early graduates and I believe both of those students will be early graduates or will be ready graduates as well. This year, all of our seniors took the fall ACT retake. We've had PVA students increase their composite score from the spring to the fall over five points. So, we really appreciate the support and the opportunity to be able to do that fall ACT retake. We've also started conducting the Ames Web screener for all of our K through eighth grade students. We're doing literacy and math screeners. This was quite an undertaking because, you know, we have 126 of those students remotely, all over Tennessee, that we're having to test, but we thought it was best if we did all K through eight instead of just K through three for that screener. We did identify about 20 percent of our students who needed additional help at that fall screener and on our winter screener, 40 percent of those 20 percent students had already jumped to grade level. So, we really appreciate the fact that we have that Ames Web available to us so we can do that remote screening. This year, we also incorporated our T and All-Corps tutoring for some of our fourth grade students. We've also added honors classes to our high school course catalog. We've had our high school students take their EOCs this year. We had 100 percent participation rate in our testing. If you don't know, we kind of split our testing where we have our high school do in the fall all their testing and then all of our third through eighth grade do the TCAT testing in the spring. This year for spring testing, we will have four juniors who will be taking the ACT in March and we have 82 students who will be third through eighth grade that will have to test for the TCAT in April. Those 82 students are over 23 counties and we plan to test in seven or eight educational facilities across the state. We usually use community colleges or universities and we use retired teachers and current teachers. As you know, this is quite an undertaking to travel five and a half hours to a university to test and so I really want to thank everyone that's involved, our retired teachers, our teachers that do that testing. I do have some plans for this upcoming school year and goals and I just want to kind of share that with you. We do plan on opening up our enrollment for our current PVA students right after spring break and then opening that enrollment up to everyone, April the first. I would like to increase our enrollment to 200 this school year. Our first goal and kind of the most important is bringing EPSOs to PVA. So, after talking with Ms. Watson, we think offering OSHA-10 to all of our incoming first CTE courses that you take, offering that OSHA-10. My second goal is to incorporate some more honors classes to our high school course catalog. I plan to do one in the fall, one in the spring and bring that up to three honors classes. We'd also like to incorporate some online security tutorials for all of our students who are in that tutorial orientation process. And the last one is really important and I'm not sure that we'll hit it next year, is to incorporate the dual enrollment, AP Access For All and possibly some state dual credit for PVA. Just give some more ESO opportunities at PVA. That's kind of the snapshot that we have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I got one quick question without going into major, you know, details. Kind of go over the process if a parent wants to get enrolled or involved with y'all's, with our program. And also, how much, how much time are you doing towards recruiting? Or do you, is that part of your, part of your process to recruit these students in to our program?
So, when I took over, Harmony basically showed me a big online process where all of these students were wanting to join Harmony. So, kind of our process, let me answer your second question first. No, I've not recruited. There are students that pretty much call daily. There's a waitlist on Harmony's where students are waiting to get in. So, we did not accept any new students this year, just so I could get acclimated to how PVA works, the ins and outs. Plus, we also started the screeners and the tutoring, so we wanted to make sure all of that took place. But pretty much no recruiting. You can go online to harmonyed.com, click Apply and it puts you into that process and then they reach out to me as well and then we go through to decide whether you're going to be admitted or not.
Very good. Any questions?
I have a question. I don't know if this is Ms. Johnson for you or for Atkins, but what is the cap, what is our population cap in this program and what are we looking to? I know this year for you to get activated and such, you wouldn't take on new students, but bouncing or hitting the tail end of Mr. Crusoe's question, you know, once, how far we want to grow this? What does marketing look like? Do we go to homeschool conventions? I know, or how do we? And then I'm questioning, how are we getting students from all these different counties that you talked about, you know? So, yeah, I just shot a bunch of questions out, kind of shotgun blast there, but...
So, I'll address some of those. All of the students that are currently in PVA and Harmony were students that were there whenever I first started. So, I plan to, when I look at enrollment this new school year, is looking at location. We were Middle Tennessee and East Tennessee and then somehow we had some West Tennessee slip in, but I kind of would like to narrow that down to Middle Tennessee and kind of go from there. I think the cap is just something that Mr. Atkins and I have talked about and I think I could manage 200 next school year as far as testing. The vision that I've not shared with Mr. Atkins, that I may not need to share publicly, is I would love to see two PVA coordinators and it would be, you know, a K through five PVA coordinator and then a six through 12 and that way we could really hone in on the grade level, but...
What you grow, you grow got there.
Honestly, with testing, you know, is pretty much our one kind of, you know, you have to logistically think about how we're spread out. The sky's the limit.
And Ms. Danny, I will say a few things. Our PVA is free to any student in the state of Tennessee and our focus has been on proven homeschool. That's been our, I guess, our target audience is that's what we want. Folks who have done this, they understand the demands of learning on your own at that pace, but it is an opportunity for those parents who are paying for a homeschool service to come in and be a part of the Lawrence County school system in a different way. to come in and be a part of the Lawrence County school system in a different way. And the recruiting across the state, we're one of the few districts that really took on that to say, we think we can offer this and it'd be good for Lawrence County school system and grow our program.
Well, I know community members, and that's why I mentioned the homeschool, what's the word I'm looking for? Show or whatever. Yeah. You know, but there's a big one, I think there's a couple of them, one in Kentucky or something like that, but I would think that if we're looking to, if that's our target audience and we're looking to grow, then we would try to market and go to those kind of trade shows.
And we have in the past. I think Ms. Johnson will be doing more of that as she gets her feet on the ground and understands it.
And I think one of my next questions, and you had brought it up, most of principals come before us and give a synopsis of their schools. They kind of give it, they have kind of a wish list. I noticed that you don't have a wish list here and you kind of answered on your back end of your statement, you kind of, another administration. Is there any other wishes that you might think that kind of put us in the back of our minds saying, hey, let's don't forget about her? Go ahead.
So with the Ames Web Screener, an RTI coordinator is something that's been on my mind and there's been some conversations had. I think someone who has more knowledge in that area would be a real asset to our, to our students. Right now, it's, it's me and Harmony kind of working together navigating this new program for us. So an RTI coordinator would be a big ask and it'd be a huge help. But that's, that's kind of where I'm at on that.
Good. We're doing a fantastic job. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our third school report is J.C. Barnett Center, Mr. White.
Good evening. So I think most of you have been here and have learned, have learned over the years a little bit about the J.C. Barnett, but we probably have some people in the audience that might not. So the J.C. Barnett is our alternative school in the district. We have 30 different programs. We have the adult high school. We have our Achievement Academy and we have our Stepping Stones Academy. The adult high school is our accelerated path to a high school diploma for students that are typically 17 years of age and older, have that hardship. Maybe there's a life change situation coming up. Had a young man call me today. He was shipping out to the Marines on, I think he said, May the 11th. And so he was one of ours that came through us because he wanted to get finished before he went to the, when it, went off to the military. So that's a fairly common thing. So that's kind of the adult high school, 17 years of age or older, some type of hardship or some reason to need to expedite that, that high school career. Then we go to the net and that's mostly juniors, seniors kind of age. Step down and you look at our Achievement Academy. Well, I'll finish up with our adult high school real quick. So we have seen 69 students to the day through that program. We've got 45 of those graduated. We'll have a lot more graduated once we have our March ACT because a lot of those students are just waiting for that ACT because that's one of the high school graduation requirements. 11 of those, 11 of those are what I call adult students, which are non-school age students, 18 years of age and older, weren't really tied to Lawrence County school systems or haven't been in some years. And they've decided and reached out that they want to get their high school diploma. I've had some that are coming back that have their GED and they just, they want to have that piece of paper and they can say they have a high school diploma. And I've got some that come to me and say, you know, I was two classes, I made a mistake, I dropped out and I'm, I'm, I'm ready to get it on. And they may be 35, 45, 50 years old even occasionally. But we've had 11 of those this year. And as always, I'm going to invite you to our graduation ceremony because it's probably one of the most unique ones we got. And it's on May 18th at noon. It's a Saturday. Feel free to stop in. We, I try not to be too long-winded. That's not really my style, but it's, it's very unique to see the age range of students that you might see at our, at our graduation ceremony. And just know that some, once you know some of the stories, that a student that might thought they never would have got their high school diploma or they may be the first in their, their family to get their high school diploma, walk across the stage, it's, it's a different feeling. Mr. Atkins always speaks at it. He always enjoys coming, so I strongly encourage you to stop by. Step down from that to our Achievement Academy. Our Achievement Academy is for grades six through 12. It's more traditional, what you think of as alternative school, but we do have a good mix of students that are disciplinary and non-disciplinary. And you might think, well, why are the discipline, non-disciplinary students there? For a multitude of reasons. Students coming in from another county, credit deficient, or like right now, you're thinking somebody transfers in from another county and they were on block, were on block, maybe they missed a bunch of school or they were on year long and the classes just don't quite align for where they were at and where we're at. They'll come over to me, maybe do some credit recovery, catch up on some stuff so they can re-enter and be at the same level credit-wise and academic-wise with their peers. That way, they're not coming in stressed from being behind. Have students that come for social, emotional reasons, whether it be they don't, they don't typically need, they don't want to be in crowds or crowds, you know, really stress them out. Also have students who come for attendance reasons. They, they missed a lot of school and they've got to come through the courts or Mr. Arco. That school has seen 91 students this year. We've had 91 individuals pass through there. I've got the breakdowns of why those students attend. I will say, just, and it's probably not a surprise to you, possessions of drugs is, is on the rise in our schools as far as the ones that are getting caught. That seems to be an increase from last year in the last couple of years. The Delta Eight in our, in our convenience stores and it's THC and it tests THC. So it's, it is causing us some, some issues with students and they're just having it on their person at school. So, you know, anything, any, any pull you have on maybe getting some places to not carry that would be much appreciated. Same thing with the vape products. Just because when they're there, they're, they're that easy for the students to get, it's very difficult to control them inside of the school because, I mean, you can walk into the nearest convenience store and pick one up. So we've seen 91 there. Our average timeframe for students is about 70 days. So, and that's up due to that, that zero tolerance increase because with those zero tolerances, they have to stay longer than like maybe a student that might just be placed there for multiple disciplinary fractions. So we have a level system that students have to work through to be able to get out of the alternative school or the Achievement Academy. And they earn points every day. They lose points for inappropriate actions, things that they're not supposed to do in class, not supposed to be in school, being out of dress code, things of those, things like that. And so then, once they get their points, we have a transition meeting with the schools and those students return. So on average, that's about 70 days for a lot of students. Can be, I mean, and it runs from anywhere from 30 to 180 essentially most of the time. Then we have our Stepping Stones Academy. Stepping Stones is our pre-K through fifth grade alternative program. Students that are placed there typically, you know, have more behavioral struggles in that, that bigger population and we're just intentionally trying to teach them how to play school, how to, how to walk in a line without, you know, hitting the person in front of them or running down the hall or things like that, using appropriate language, things of, things of those nature, things of that nature. And so it can be an intense environment sometimes, but, you know, they, they need as much loving as anybody, even when they're having their, their worst moments. And one of the reasons I enjoy it is because I feel like when you make a difference at an alternative school, you definitely realize you've made a difference because there's usually a big, a big change in the behaviors or the actions of the individuals. So that's kind of the rundown of the J.C. Barnett. As far as the ask, the wish list, let's see. My building was built in 1940, 50s. I would love some air conditioning that, air conditioned the halls and heated the halls. Drop ceilings would be nice, but, you know, we will, we will take whatever we can get as far as capital projects go. Other than that, I have a group of teachers that work with me that, they're amazing. I mean, you, you don't, you don't come do what they do every day and not enjoy their job, so I want to thank them. And other than that, do you have any questions for me? Yes, sir.
What, what is your faculty and staff? This, this 91 in the Achievement Academy, how many staff members and how many classes is that broken into?
So the 91 is total students involved in our program. So that's kind of a revolving number. Our, my Achievement Academy has four teachers, well, it has four teachers and four assistants. And my adult high school has one teacher and one assistant. And then my Stepping Stones has one teacher and two assistants. And then my building has a social worker.
So on the Achievement Academy side, you mentioned Stepping Stones was K or first through fifth, so I'm assuming we don't send, you've got to be sixth grade or above before you get sent to the Achievement Academy?
Typically. Typically, we have had some fifth graders before. A lot of times that might be based on honestly maturity and even size. If, if a student's larger than a lot of our, our fifth grade students at the Stepping Stones at the time, or if they're more mature and we feel that that more strict environment is required, we'll move them up to the, to the Achievement Academy. Whereas Stepping Stones is more, I would say restorative in the sense of it's, there's not the strict dress code. It's not strictly punitive. A lot of those students are there with parental permission. I mean, their, their, their parents are choosing that position, that place just, just to help maybe teach them some of those behaviors for school behavior.
Is there one other, or another couple of questions on the, on your reasonings? You've got, it's alarming to me as well, and you made mention of the drugs and alcohol being an increase. And specifically, so is that the majority of that, this Delta Eight or whatever vape? Is that what the drug?
Yes, the majority, the majority of the drugs and alcohol is going to be some type of vape THC product. Now, whether that's Delta Eight, Delta Nine, Delta Ten, they're, they're all one in the same, but that, that's where we're, we're seeing the increase. I mean, if I went back three years ago, that number's probably under 10.
So that, that's my last question to you and I would love to see if you have that data, Mr. Atkins somewhere.
I could pull.
Do we have a histogram showing, you know, kind of how these, these instances that you've got laid out here, how that trended over the past?
I mean, I have, I have the data on our, on my spreadsheets. I would just have to go back and pull it and put it into a chart.
If you would, I'd be very interested to see that. Thank you.
Is your, go ahead.
Mr. White?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you say that students at the Achievement Academy and the students at Stepping Stones Academy, are these students all from Lawrence County?
Yes, sir. They're all, to be in the Achievement Academy, you have to already be enrolled in another school. Same thing with Stepping Stones, the adult high school. Everybody but those 11 adults would have been enrolled in Lawrence County school systems. The 11 adults are probably, are the only people that would not have been enrolled in Lawrence County school systems.
But they might have been previously enrolled?
Correct. They, they could have been previously enrolled. They do live inside the county, but they, they are just currently outside of school age.
Is your social worker full-time or does she share in other schools?
Uh, Mr. Case is our, is our social worker there and he's full-time with us.
And you have SRO there as well?
Yes, yes, we have SRO.
I'm curious, how many, what percentage are repeat offenders?
More than I would like. I don't know that I could tell you that number off the top of my head. I would say less than 10% for sure, but it's still more than I would, than I would like to see. Of course, I, I mean, I'll, I have a lot of students that, we have, we have a much different environment than, than any of the schools in the county, right? We're a much smaller environment. My class sizes are pretty much 10 to 15 kids in a classroom. We do concurrent learning as far as, and this is talking about Achievement Academy. Concurrent learning, which is where, you know, they remote end either the class or that, that teacher puts on work through Google Classroom. And the reason we do that is because they're transitioning back in and out throughout the semester. So we don't want them to fall behind and then have to come back, not having seen any of the material the teacher's been presenting for the last nine weeks. But, you know, we do have some repeaters. I hope to turn that down, but we have a lot of students who just enjoy our environment, honestly. And they do better as far as with one-on-one attention, less distractions, less ability to, less downtime, I guess, you know, you don't have your breaks and your, your, your open lunches and things like that, even though they probably wouldn't. Well, I have a lot that would say they like it better and then I've got a lot that say they wouldn't like it better, but I tell them that their choices are telling me otherwise. Like if you wanted to be out of here, you would, you would decide to get out.
Ms. Jacobs?
I'd just like to say we appreciate everything you do because every child that you save there, it's amazing.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate you.
Mr. Atkins?
And I just want to share with the board, 2021, Mr. White and I sat down and said, look, we're going to have a graduation over here and we're going to make it special. His staff took that on and we had just a handful of folks. 2022, that number increased a little bit more. And this past summer, or this past graduation, we had to move it into the cafeteria. We had to bring in more chairs. That entire area was, was full of parents there seeing their children. Mrs. Jacobs mentioned about how we're saving kids and helping kids, but in 2022, I was at the graduation and there was a gentleman there and he said to me, he said, Mr. Atkins, it's taken me 30 years to get my high school diploma, but I did it. And he was excited about it, but Mr. White and his folks give those folks outside of the school age an opportunity.
I'd also like to commend you on that since you've been taken over in 2021. And also, I think last year we saw this similar presentation, but you didn't have a little emblem up there that, that, who designed that and what is that? Is that a badger?
It is a badger. We, we are the J.C. Barnett Honey Badgers. And that was designed by the tech department of Lawrence County school systems.
Good deal. Any other questions? Good deal. Thanks a lot. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Moving on to report items, B, personnel, personnel report. That was in your packet. Are there any questions or comments? Very good. Moving on to item C, Director's Update. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, thank you. Budget season is underway. Mrs. Elig and I have had several conversations. I've had conversations with County Executive Morgan. We will begin that process more as the semester, spring develops. Our principals have budget information that they're developing and have to turn in on March 1st. Enrollment in the Lawrence County school system, staying steady. We are seeing a few more people here, but we also see people leave the system. So it's steady in the number, still slightly under 7,000 when you factor in pre-K, PVA, and brick and mortar. Our academic recognition, we're still waiting for the embargo to be lifted so that we can recognize our reward schools. I did send information out to those schools, asking them what would they like from the board as a part of the Director's Fund, discretionary fund, where we recognize success. We'll get that information and I will let each of you know when we're going to have that event at your school so you can come by and see them as well. I do want to mention just a few things, following up on Mrs. Ridgeway's academic recognition when she spoke about the A through Fs. The South Central Core, those 15 districts that you've heard me talk about several times and the success of the Lawrence County school system, third through eighth grade ELA since 2017. grade ELA, since twenty seventeen, looking at that data, our school system in third through eighth ELA has consistently been in the top five. Our teachers are performing strongly in those areas, top five, uh, since twenty seventeen. Uh, we remain consistent, and that's one thing the director shared with me from those fifteen districts. At Lawrence County is consistent in their performance. You'll have a year or two when you, you slip, but overall, we're consistent. In three through eight mathematics, we're in the top six of those fifteen districts. High school mathematics, Algebra I, II, and III, we're in the top three. And when you look at our size, we're number one. We do compete with the school that had thirty students tested. Well, in Algebra I, they tested thirty students, Lawrence County tested five hundred and fifty-nine students. You're going to have a little bit of a range there. Algebra II, other districts, the highest was two hundred and fifty-three, we're, we're four hundred and fifty-six. And then geometry, one, the number one district had eighty-six students. We're testing four hundred and seventy-six students. So it's going to fluctuate a little bit, but our, our math scores do, are, are, are very, very good in those areas. High school ELA, I think Mr. Joyner mentioned this, we had our ELA teachers, that, that English one and English two, from all three high schools gathered before Christmas, uh, for a professional learning event, and we had them meet again after Christmas. They've taken on developing that curriculum and using that curriculum in a way that they think is more beneficial to their instruction and to their students. And Dr. Glass has spearheaded that, but those English teachers coming together as a group throughout the county saying, here's what we want to do, and it's working out really well. Our science scores, third through eighth, um, a lot of progress there when you understand that we haven't had a science adoption upgrade in years. And our science teachers, third grade and seventh place, our fourth grade moved up two spots. They were sixth, they went up to four. Uh, fifth grade moved from eleventh to sixth place. Our sixth grade, uh, from seventh to sixth place. And then fourth grade, excuse me, seventh grade, uh, jumped, uh, eleven point eight increase in the students who met or exceeded state expectations. So they had that kind of increase in one year, eleven percent increase. So they've jumped a, a good number. And then our eighth grade, um, showed a fifteen point three percent increase in meet and exceeded the, the state benchmark, this standard. Uh, so we've got to do something, excuse me, we've got to do something in the science area that when that math adoption, or that science adoption comes up, and that social studies adoption, and we're already looking ahead for that. Biology at the high school level, the only subject tested is biology, I should say, and we're currently fourth place out of those fifteen there. Social studies, another area where we haven't had a textbook adoption in years, though we have adopted it, we just haven't put it in the hands of our people. Something we've got to do, we're tenth overall, and so we've got work to do there. Our sixth grade, uh, where they began testing social studies in the tenth grade, excuse me, the sixth grade, is in the tenth spot. Seventh, after one year of social studies, in the seventh grade, they're in fifth place. And then an eighth grade is third. So you can see, the more exposure they're getting, they're catching on, they're doing well. At high school last year, U.S. history was second overall. In overall achievement, Lawrence County is, when you look at size, we're first. When you look at just where we are, we're second in overall achievement. So out of those fifteen districts, we're second. If you look at the size, because if we're competing with a smaller district, they're probably going to have a, a different comparison to us. But overall, second in overall achievement. And our growth this year, we moved from tenth place to sixth place. So I say all that to tell you that's the, the work of the, the teachers. Uh, the principals will tell you that, every person at the central office will tell you that, our people are doing a good job. Some areas to work on, ACT. I think every principal will tell you, we're not happy where we are on our ACT scores, but that's a state thing going on right now, and that's, that's going to catch up. Our folks are, are making progress, they're working towards that, but ACT cannot be a secondary problem. ACT is beginning as early as kindergarten, first grade, teaching those skills, working with kids. Uh, we, we got that in our five-year plan to make ACT a focus in Lawrence County, we're going to work on that. I will remind you again of my concern for universal school choice or the education savings accounts. I've shared that with legislators, I've shared that with board members, the, the impact that could have on Lawrence County. Uh, I do want to mention the great work taking place with Evers Construction. The board approved that contract back before Christmas. If you want to see a happy principal, uh, go out and meet Dr. Jones at New Prospect. Her doors were replaced, have been worked on out there. The peace of mind for security is just amazing when you see that. Uh, and we've got that going on in, in all the other schools as well. I mentioned, uh, meetings with county executives about, uh, growth, uh, concerns about growth, our facilities, what growth could do to Lawrence County. I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then also, the rejection of federal funds, I know that is something that's in the legislature. Lawrence County receives about five point two million dollars in federal funds. Without those funds, that is a significant, uh, hit to our operating budget and how we impact kids and how we teach kids and how we help kids. Um, so we have to be mindful of that as well. I continue to advocate for the continuation of tutoring and interventionist. Our principals have said to us, the success we've had in Lawrence County is because of interventionist and tutoring. That helps our teachers, it allows them to pull out kids and work with kids. It's almost like if you have an injury, you go to physical therapy. Tutoring and intervention is just like that. They're, they're helping them and working them and getting them back in shape. So I want to conclude with just saying, great things are happening in Lawrence County school system is because of the great people who give of themselves each and every day for our kids, no matter what they do. If they're a bus driver, a, a food service, janitor, EA, teacher, administrator, we have good people doing great work in Lawrence County, and that's a testament. These scores and what you hear about them is a testament to these dedicated men and women. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Are there any questions for Mr. Atkins?
Uh, just, Mr. Chairman, two real quick, I think you can answer briefly, but during your, uh, comments there, Mr. Atkins, you said that we have adopted a social studies curriculum, but have not put it into the hands of our folks. Can you give me an explanation of what, because we struggled with that, I think you said in your, your statements, that was an area that needed improvement. So can you expand on that a little bit?
I, I'm not sure, because it was before my time in this, so I don't know. I know when the ELA came up, they had high-quality instructional materials. When the math adoption came up, the board and our folks made sure there was high-quality instructional materials. As these next two adoptions come around, science and social studies, that's our plan to follow what we did with those two.
Did I hear you right, though, that says we did adopt something some years ago, but we've never put that into the hands of the teachers?
I believe that's right. I believe you can adopt it.
We, um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, because you can clarify that.
We, um, at that point in time, we were in, um, Dr. Heath was here, and we were on the Chromebook initiative. So we did an open source, which was allowable at that time under state law. Um, in lieu of buying textbooks, we bought Chromebooks and then used on, we were to use online resources that were adopted. I'm going to have to go back and look at specifically what those resources were. Um, that's not my, my area.
So what, and I apologize for keeping, so what are our social studies teachers going off of right now?
The standards, so Tennessee State standards.
But we don't have, we've not issued, correct, we don't, we've not issued them, I mean, in that curriculum comes this teacher's, I've got this book, I've got this material, hey, this is what I'm going to use to teach, and it's got practice quizzes, it's got, you know, example lesson plans and all that. We've not provided that to these social studies teachers.
That was not what was adopted in year.
And they've been having to come up with that on their own since however long. Thank you. Last question for you, Mr. Atkins. Can you explain where we're at with our, um, with all the missed days that we had with the snow? I know, I think you and I talked, but is the state government going to forgive those? Are we bumping close to the, the amount that we got built in?
Sure. Let me, uh, say something on the science and social studies. Those were scheduled to be up for adoption, maybe twenty-two, twenty-three, and then COVID and all that, so they have been pushed back, which, that, that's not our doing, that's just simply the state doing it. Uh, just today, uh, well, probably four o'clock, uh, this afternoon, got a, an email from the Commissioner of Education. So the snow days aren't waived, because there wasn't a declaration of emergency by the governor, but the issues that we experienced with water in Lawrence County were. So we, we received notice today of three days returned to us because of the water challenges and struggles that we had there.
Okay. So what did that put us at?
I think it has us at three days, and then we have a day late in the year that if we had an issue, we could turn that into an academic day and not.
You've got three days left.
Three days plus that day if we had to.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Uh, moving on to, uh, the director's evaluation, I believe that's coming up, uh, when is that coming?
Well, I think what we're asking here is, do, does the board want to pursue the online form like we did last year, where we email that out to you, you complete it, and it does the calculation, so Mr. Nider and Chairman Caruso would not have to sit and do the math, it would just does it, and we can turn it around and get it in your hands pretty quickly.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I, that was a very good, uh, uh, tool that we had, and I think everybody participated, so.
Do you need a motion?
You need a motion.
So, could I get a motion to, uh, adopt the director's evaluation through online?
I'd make a motion, we adopted.
In a second. We have a motion to adopt it online in a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very well, that will be director's evaluation online this time. So, uh, when it comes up, uh, I guess Ms., uh, Ms. Kaiser would, uh, go ahead and send that out to everyone. Uh, also, uh, on the same, uh, directive is, uh, board self-evaluation, uh, that also will come out on, online as well. Uh, I mean, I think it's a good tool for everybody, kind of give, uh, you know, give their input of where we at, uh, where we need to be a, as a board as a whole. So, uh, again, I would like to have a motion to, uh, adopt the board self-evaluation, which will be online as well.
Motion to adopt board self-evaluation.
As safe as it is.
Uh, very well, we have a motion to have self-evaluation in a second. Uh, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, very good, that motion passes, and, uh, once again, that will be coming out, uh, from the state, and Ms. Kaiser will send that out as well. Thank you. Uh, moving on to, uh, item number F, is LCEA, and I don't see, I don't see her here today do, so, uh, I, I would like to kind of add to that. Have we, have we started the negotiations, or, or is that in the works, or where, where are we at on that?
Let's see, Ms. Chairman, we are meeting, um, I believe the twenty-six is our first meeting with, uh, LCEA about the MOU.
So that'll be next week then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. Uh, and then moving on to item G, is the Tennessee Legislative Network, um.
I don't have any.
Ms. Springer, do you have anything? Okay. Uh, you know, uh, I'd like to add that, you know, there's, uh, there's a lot, a lot coming down from the legislative, uh, that's, that's gonna, it's gonna impact a lot on our education system, so just kind of, just kind of beware, and if, you know, a lot of that's being passed, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be a big impact, so just kind of beware of that. Uh, H, uh, report item is a TSBA Day on the Hill. I, I believe that's going to be, uh, later in March, is that correct? March, late March?
I don't know.
Do you remember?
I don't know.
No? Okay, so.
I think it's in late March.
Late March, so that's, that's coming up. Uh, if you would, you know, if we'd like to do that, uh, just get with Ms. Kaiser, and she'll set up all the, all the details and the spending night and, uh, you know, and all that good stuff, and, uh, it's a, it's a pretty good, pretty good, you know, pretty good day. Uh, moving on to our next item, uh, for executive committee, we had one that was approved this last, um, month. It was, uh, CET drone kits for competition, which is a total of thirty thousand. Uh, Mr. Atkins, would you like to add anything to that?
It is part of the drone competition that will take place, uh, this spring, uh, our STEM teachers, Mrs. Watson, uh, and it was just some materials to have for that, uh, competition.
Very well. Uh, I, I, when that, when that executive committee, uh, had come across my email, I kind of, kind of took it back, and we did look at the minutes from last time, and I believe, uh, that, uh, we decided that anything under twenty-five thousand that is coming from the, uh, uh, general fund, uh, will be, have to be voted for, uh, as a board, as a whole board, but anything over that, that's coming from a, uh, from a federal fund can be, uh, approved. Is that correct? Am I correct there? So, so that was approved. Uh, moving on to item number four, other item for consideration under A, uh, uh, to begin proposal request for vendors for the following services, and I will, uh, you can read all those, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Atkins about, uh, these services and we'll vote on it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, board, before you is a request for me to, for you to authorize me to begin a request for qualifications, an RFQ, from firms who provide the services listed on the agenda. Uh, it is for districts who are experiencing growth, challenges, concerns, issues, or those that are expected to be experiencing that. And I believe we all know that there's a lot of talk about us growing as a county. I think the census by twenty thirty could have us over fifty thousand, some estimates about fifty-three thousand. Uh, so the process right now is simply asking you to authorize me to begin that request for qualifications. It does not cost the board anything, there's not any money involved in that. Uh, it's very similar to the RFQ that we did when, when the board was looking for legal services. After we, uh, changed lawyers, we put an RFQ out, and we had a number of lawyers, attorneys, firms express interest, and then the board executed who they wanted. So I'm going to give you a rationale for this. Uh, our chamber has announced industry coming to Lawrence County. We've heard about Southern Middle Tennessee, we've heard about Tennessee as a whole, but Southern Middle Tennessee. Our county officials, our chamber is working to bring industry in here. With that industry comes people, and that development in Lawrence County is strong, and with that development comes growth, and it's growth for the county, but growth for Lawrence County's school system. And there are problems that we may face if we're not proactive, forward-thinking, and addressing those issues. So the RFQ is just that, a proactive, forward-thinking approach to ensure that the Lawrence County school system is best serving the, the community, our students, our faculty, our staff, our taxpayers. As growth comes, we need to be prepared for it. I think all of us would, would agree, we've heard about growth. We've, we've heard that for the last couple of years now. I know Mrs. Jacobs, in her line of work, has shared with me personally, I believe she shared, uh, publicly before, that the number of inspections that she has been a part of, home inspections, new homes, is continuing to grow and climb, not only in Lawrence County, but coming Southern Murray County into Lawrence County. There's a lot happening, a lot to be proud of. If you've traveled north on forty-three, you're very much aware of the location on the left and what that could become. There's some places in the city where there's development being talked about. Development of a hundred and fifty homes, starter homes, uh, middle-of-the-road homes, uh, could seriously impact the Lawrence County school system. So we need to begin the process of working with a firm that specializes in that, that says, here's how you need to do the long-range planning, your enrollment analysis, your capacity analysis, your boundary analysis, uh, public facilitation process where community members and stakeholders are involved in that. They get to express their concerns, support, disagreement, we give them that opportunity. An enrollment and, uh, functional capacity, as enrollment comes in, what's happening in these buildings? Can they withstand that? Can we, do we need to be looking at buildings? Do we need to be looking at expansion? And then a district-wide, uh, attendance adjustment, uh, student transportation needs, a number of things, but mainly it is an enrollment, uh, capacity, boundaries, a number of things that we need to be looking at for what, twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-two may look like for Lawrence County. Rather than trying to play catch-up when it happens, we're trying to get ahead of it now. If you've talked to folks from Rutherford County, they will tell you, they live in a daily nightmare, because they're building, they're rezoning, they're doing all sorts of things because they weren't ahead of it. It just happens so quickly. I think we owe Lawrence Countyans better. I think we need to give them more. So the proposal before you is, it's going to be a, a thorough analysis, an assessment, recommendation from whomever the board would pick, or they wouldn't have to pick anybody, but all you're authorizing me to do is put that out there and say, if you do this kind of work, send us information so we know who you are, and we can screen you and decide if we wanted to use you or not. Uh, that's what the RFQ is about. You would authorize me to do that, it's no cost to do that, it's just putting it together and sending it out, and it's on those, those items right in front of you, the, the enrollment, the capacity, the boundary, the public facilitation. the capacity, the boundary, the public facilitation, I think is important, enrollment and projections. A 5 to 10-year look at what's happening in Lawrence County, what can, what will be in a kindergarten class in 5, 7, 10 years? How big will those kindergarten classes be, and what will that do as they matriculate through our system? So a simple yes or no on this tonight is what we're looking for, and then I will put the RFQ together, I'm happy to share it with the Board. It'll be fairly detailed to screen these firms. We just don't want somebody coming in here and saying, "I've got a calculator and a pencil, I can do it for you." We want it to be much more detailed and involved, and it be an unbiased, data-driven approach so that we can say to the County Commission and to the taxpayers, or whomever it is, it's unbiased, it's data-driven, because the County Commission's going to need to prepare for growth from the county perspective, they're going to need to prepare for growth from a school system perspective. And so if this growth happens, we need to be ahead of it, not trying to catch up with it. So a simple yes or no tonight.
I like what I'm hearing here, and I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve, allow Mr. Jacobs to be proactive and proceed with this.
We have a motion, and a second to have Mr. Jacobs proceed with this, or any other further questions regarding this aspect? I've got one, is each bullet going to have a representative, or one firm take on all of these?
Well, that would be our criteria, is that we work with one firm who can do this. So if one of the firms who submits a RFQ to us cannot fulfill what we're putting out, we wouldn't use them. They've got to be able to meet what we're asking for in the public facilitation and some other things that we definitely want.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add a few, if this passes tonight, I'm of the opinion we need to expedite this and get this out there and get it back and start moving in this direction as soon as we can. I, for one, feel like we're already, really, as a system and as the county, we're already behind with the growth that's coming, and it's already here. And I hear, not only in the North End, but I'm hearing the South End, the southeastern edge is experiencing growth from Northern Alabama, specifically around the Huntsville area, is growing into the Bonner Town area. So we need to get the ball rolling, and sooner rather than later.
So on, feeding off of John said, about what timeframe will you look at to, from, tonight going forward of getting somewhere?
Well, if the Board authorizes me to begin this, I have already reached out to some districts that have done this recently or are in the process of doing it, and we would definitely want to grab their information and use that if it meets what we're looking for, and put that out as soon as possible. It will probably, just the study alone, I would say probably will take a year, maybe a year and a half. I say that, that I think it's one of the conversations we have with someone, because they just don't come in here and throw it together and give it to you. They want to study it, and they want to present it, and they want to share it, and they want to give you solutions to problems that don't exist now, but will exist in 5 years, 7 years, 10 years.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead with Mr. Jacobs to approve, or any other questions?
Just go ahead, Mr. Jacobs, you said they did this free of charge.
Well, the RFQ is, the RFQ is putting out, then, if you had 5 firms, we would present to the Board, here are 5 firms, all 5 met our criteria, only 2 met our criteria, here's their listing price if they come in here and do these services for you. That's where the, that's when the money would have to be discussed, and if the Board would want to pursue that with a firm or not.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries to proceed with your getting the RFQs. Before I go any further, does any other Board Mayor have anything to add or like to share? Our next Board meeting is going to be March 21st at 5:30. Can I get a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, go ahead, boys.
One comment before we adjourn. I was really proud of Mr. Jacobs the other day at that county, county-wide, state of the county meeting. He did an excellent job, and I saw one of the paper, little local papers today, on the front page, y'all saw this thing there?
I didn't see it.
I was in some business, and they were laying on the counter, but it had like the state of the Lawrence County School System is good, something like that. But it was, it was about that county meeting. That was an excellent meeting.
Yeah, good point. It was, it was very, very informative, and I think it was the first inaugural, and so, so there'll be, there'll be another one, we hope so. Another motion to adjourn?